Are we going to call this meeting to order? And we are going to start with a pledge of allegiance, if you'd all join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jumble the words. Thank you. All right. First order of business is to approve the meetings, meeting minutes from August 8th and August 25th. And I just want to note that Sarah Ugolini's name is spelled incorrectly, and so I will make that correction with Ann Marie. And in the first paragraph, it says, "unique assessment," that should be community needs assessment. And then there are just a couple of other minor grammatical things. For example, on page two, it is just the New York Forward grant program, so we'll eliminate the downtown revitalization initiative on that. But there was nothing else substantive in my notes. Anybody else have any comments or edits?
We'll get a clean copy with the revisions.
Sure will. And I had no comments on the workshop meetings for the 25th. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great, done. All right, now we are going to have our public hearing. And so I need a motion to open the public hearing. This public hearing is for the fire company contract agreement for fire service for the village of Red Hook. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment regarding the police contract? Fire department contract, sorry, I did say that wrong.
And this agreement had been published on our website?
I believe it's on the website.
Okay.
It is a standard agreement. There is not anything substantively different, except the dollar amount went up, the same amount as our police and highway contracts went up. It is a two-year contract. We are a year into the contract period because the fire department was struggling with getting their reports together. And, welcome Declan. And they have now given us reports for all of 2021 and 2022 through July, nope, through June. We do have those reports. I don't see anyone on screen on Zoom. No one in the public wants to make a comment. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, public hearing is closed. All right. So the next order of business, now that we've had our public hearing, you each have in front of you Resolution Number 19, which is to approve the fire protection agreement with Red Hook Fire Company for 21 through 2022, 2021 through 2023. And it reads, "Whereas the village of Red Hook desires to contract with the Red Hook Fire Company for fire services, whereas a properly noticed public hearing was held on September 12, 2022, whereas the village board has considered any public input from the public hearing, now therefore be it resolved that the village of Red Hook hereby awards the contract for fire services from June 1, 2021, through May 31, 2023, to the Red Hook Fire Company pursuant to the attached contract. The village board authorizes the mayor to sign said contract. Upon return of fully executed contract payment for 2021 services, be submitted to the Red Hook Fire Company." And I'll note, that comes out of the 2021-2022 budget, not the current budget. We have accrued for that. "Upon receipt of current reports, payment for 2022 services be brought up to date per contract." May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Brent, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Declan. And, well, let's do a roll call. Or any other questions? No? Brent?
Yes.
Charlie?
Aye.
Mel Corca?
Aye.
Declan?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Okay, so that resolution has passed. Thank you. The next order of business is the New York Forward. At the last village meeting, you all approved our submission of a letter of intent for the New York Forward grant. And Amy Smith, woman who wears many hats, including the program director for the library, the chair of our events committee, and all around Queen Bee, she is here because she is helping us write the grant application, which is due the end of this month?
Yes.
29th?
Sadly, it's the 23rd.
The 23rd, okay. But we wanted to have a discussion this evening about the vision statement to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Well, I, everyone has one of these, and particularly if you happen to go over, I have my copy, but if people at home want to play along, I have it for them.
There is, no one, no one, but it is...
I have these.
Do you want, do you want a copy? You can have my copy.
Thank you.
So this is just, this is literally the application packet for this. There are two things that we wanted to, the first thing would be to look at page 14 of this. It discusses the eligible project types.
And just to clarify, this is the New York Forward grant application explanation, and it says everything that is allowed is not allowed, what you need to do in each spot. So it's lengthy. Steve, if you want a copy, just let me know.
I think I printed an extra one, I'm just drowning in paper.
You're good, all right.
Anyway, it is a public document written by the state, Department of State. So essentially, they briefly review the types of eligible project types. I have been supporting and working with Erin and Brent and Mel Corca, and basically putting together a whole bunch of things that have been talked about for a long time into a package that sort of works for this well. And so our project falls into the general category of public improvement projects. And then the key thing are what is ineligible. And the reason I'm just reviewing these is just to sort of frame your thinking when we talk about the vision. So ineligible, basically what they want to do is use the money to fund things that will definitely happen.
Soon.
Yes, soon. Within the, well, I won't say exactly how long they give you, because I'm not, it's not entirely clear, but basically, they are only interested in funding implementable things. They are not going to fund anything that involves a hiring consultants to do a plan. It has to involve making it happen, show it. So this is an exciting opportunity for us because we can build on the recent successes that you all have made to bring us a sewer, which is definitely going to rekindle, add more kindling to the interest in businesses being invested here. But you can't see a sewer, which is really nice, actually, because we don't want a sewer. But what New York Forward will allow us to do is build on that for visible expressions of how invested the municipality is in its own business district's economic development. And so what we're talking about when we sit down are bumpouts, which are extensions of the curb into Route 199. This will create sort of, I'm using my hands, which is weird, but it literally goes like this. And so we're talking about putting those in on 199. It will demarcate parking spaces, it will demarcate crosswalks more clearly, it will also give us places to green up sections of sidewalk that are currently devoid of any space for anything green. We are also talking about the type of, you may have seen them in other areas, solar-powered your speed is, thank you so much for obeying the speed limit as people come into the village, as well as at the sort of four points of entry, welcome to the village of Red Hook, sort of very clear place-making types of things. In addition, the essential view that we're taking is that these are all projects that will improve the pedestrian experience in Red Hook, in the village of Red Hook. So that also involves human scale light posts, both for the light at night, but also for the ability to have flags. A lot of communities have hometown heroes flags certain months of the year, or welcome to the village, or different, you know, I don't know, it's fall, they have different themes.
And just an example of that is we have two light posts like that in front of the info center.
Yeah, exactly.
And we have now fixed the lights, so the lights go on.
Bonus. So yeah, by human scale, just not the like giant ones that DOT has put in that are like the, yeah, anyway. And potentially, we could also make these access points for a free public Wi-Fi network for people who are visiting the village using its many wonderful other amenities. So that's the sort of package we're talking about. A key aspect of improving the pedestrian experience is also thinking about parking and how people get from where they park their car to where they want to go. And so this is also thinking in terms of supporting the concept that Brent, I'm sorry, you guys call each other official names, but Brent has put forward about a sub-business district in the northern area of Broadway, North Broadway, which will help us again green along the sidewalks, put through sidewalks, and those sorts of steps. So I'm speaking very quickly about a broad array of things, but this is the sort of thing. Everything we propose needs to relate both to the village's own commitments to its own future in terms of amendments that have been made to the comprehensive plan over time. The illustrated sketch plan is a key factor in this. Additionally, the project needs to relate to the Regional Economic Development Council's strategic plans for the Mid Hudson regions of economic development. In this way, the key elements of the regional economic development plan that we will be speaking to in our application are, excuse me, I have allergies, are a concern for environmental concerns in terms of greening spaces, creating, Brent would speak, and other people would speak far more eloquently on this than I, but the ways in which it affects the temperature, the human experience, it also affects the traffic, to have more trees, to have more green spaces. They're also very keen on initiatives by municipalities that both retain current residents and attract new residents, as well as retain current businesses and attract new businesses. So all of these things combined would be a package that meets these things, and is the intent. So if you go to page 25.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yes.
So under the public improvement projects?
Yes.
Portion of it, I did see where projects in this category may include recreational trails, new and upgraded parks, and public art?
Yeah.
So we are embarking on some major upgrades to Abraham's Park, both with our new seating area, additional trees, new benches, and public art. So I don't know, that could be included within this?
We can certainly talk about how to connect it.
I think the key is that we can't, that this grant won't pay for the plan.
Right.
So the grant...
It won't pay for a plan, and the key is that it will have to involve connecting it very obviously to the business district. Because at root, this is about economic development. And I agree, it's related, but we have to make sure that we're...
So we'll talk a little later about that. And the other couple things, we do have some past projects beyond the sewer project. We just spent $5 million on upgrading the water distribution system, and we also have for reference the pattern book that we have, so just...
Thank you. I was, I was speaking cursorily, but thank you, yeah. Okay, so one of the unique elements of this, if you guys have already spoken about, but the New York Forward, they, they ask us to craft a fairly, fairly specific plan, and then if awarded, they ask us to convene a committee of, that's a combination of residents, business owners, landlord, all this interested parties, who then sort of take the project apart, but have to put it back together. Anyway, there's a lot of involvement. One of the reasons why that makes this, this is the first time they've ever done it this way. We were talking to Patterns for Progress earlier today, Mel Corca and I, about this. And one of the wonderful things about this is that by bringing in representatives from all these different interests in business district development, people are more invested, and then it is more likely that the projects are sustained and supported because they have been collaboratively developed. So it's a really nice thing, and I think Red Act makes a good fit. I should hope I make that, because that's the argument of making it.
But also, your point is that that means that we don't have to do all the specific projects that we put in the grant application, we can change it.
That is correct. In fact, they, they expect there to be some change. You need to present a specific, here's, these are these very implementable things we could do, and then also be willing to let them go. So, yeah. So one of the interesting aspects of this, page 25, is, tells you the different pieces of the application. And number three, the vision statement. They ask, I'll just give you the laugh for it. They would like the application to include a brief statement of the municipality's vision for downtown revitalization. This vision statement should be reflective of the unique nature of the downtown and the aspirations of the community for the future. We are not, the next sentence is about if you're applying for both funding programs, we're not eligible for the DRI. So that is part of what we're here for. And also, so that I can answer questions.
So the idea for tonight was just to give each of us an opportunity to hear about, a little bit more about the grant application, to understand a little bit more about what we could be funded for and what we can't be funded for, and to give each of us an opportunity to add to the, just the broader concept of what, what our vision is for the village. And I think that Brent and I met with Amy on Friday, so we've had some preliminary conversations in many of the, in the sketch plan and the pattern book. There's a variety of sentences about the vision of a walkable village center, adding green space, making it pleasant to be, so that we retain people in the village, and that, that sort of idea. But again, it seemed like the perfect opportunity to give all of us a chance to, to just share some thoughts, or some phrases, or turns of phrases that Amy can incorporate into the, into the grant application.
And can you share the three questions, the four questions that were in the survey?
Oh, that's right. I, so for those of you who are not signed up for my newsletter, I encourage you to do that, you can do that on the website.
You're not all, obviously, you're not all signed up for it, because I know how many responses we have. You are all signed up.
So in the, in the newsletter, we did have a blurb about the New York Forward, and we said, if you, if you have any ideas, or would like to contribute some, some thoughts, please, you know, fill out our survey. So we have had a few, and we would certainly encourage more. I will say, the initial one had permissions required, so that was a little bit of a hitch, but those, that permission is gone. It's also, you can find it on the website as well. Anybody have any, any thoughts, just general thoughts you'd like to add?
Well, I would like to add that one of the things I think is so exciting about this grant opportunity is the way that we can have community involvement and discussion about these goals. And I think that will be a really important part of developing these, you know, goals, to be really responsive to what the community wants. And so I think that's a really great thing, that that is built into the process of going through this, this grant. And I'm excited about that.
Anybody else? Declan, should we call it a more runnable city? You want it more runnable in the village?
This guy wears shoes.
That could work. All right. It's a good compromise.
Yeah.
Oh, so we need a name for like our, our theme?
No, I don't think so. This is really just...
We do like that one, I mean, we could do with a couple road races.
If that's your vision, you could share it.
Some road races, there you go.
But that's like, you know, that's not a grand thing, that's just doing it. Get them together.
It's more for the daily experience of people in the village, I think.
Yeah. How are we doing on trash collection? That's okay, like we're at a good level, service is reasonable? Okay, cool.
Do you know what's, what's interesting about that, is we have talked about the possibility of doing an annual or a six-month garbage tag?
Yeah.
That goes with a garbage bin. And I know Mel Corca's vision is that they would be red with the village logo on it.
A little place-making.
A little place-making.
A little place-making.
In garbage.
Yeah. That would be, and then, and then everyone else would be jealous, and so they'd want to sign up for it. So that is, we could add that.
I mean, garbage cans cost money.
They do. And implementable.
Oh, man. Wait. That could be construed as business development?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, I think that enhancing the branding.
I think visually, it would look super cool.
Agreed.
And...
Agreed.
To see like all the red, red and white bins out on the street.
The nice thing is you can make the suggestions, and then the community will whittle them down to the, I mean, the, the committee that's created.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be a lofty visionary statement, if there is something that, if there is something that, you know, people wish the village could buy for the business district, this is, this is our chance to consider those things.
Another thing that we talked a bit about was the school zone.
Yes.
Creating a school zone that would be...
School speed zone.
Yeah, because there are issues with people speeding along those, both those routes.
And adding more of the, I'm pointing to the flashing light crosswalks.
Yeah. I like Tivoli's solar-powered speed meters. I know Brent, you mentioned they're not legally enforceable, but...
Now that the state has changed the law, so...
Oh, really?
To local law adoption.
Oh.
Reduce our street speed limit to 25 miles an hour, and it would be enforceable.
Wow.
And also, if you, Mel Corca and I have been studying a lot of traffic calming techniques, which is something Brent has also spoken a lot about. And if you bring people's attention...
Yeah.
...to your speed, as well as thanking them...
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Keep it pleasant.
The right speed, then it, it just psychologically, people slow down.
Ease up a bit.
Yeah, it's, so yeah, you don't even need to threaten a ticket, you can just...
Lots of nice red, Village of Red Hook garbage bins, you know, left in the street would also slow traffic down, really.
That's one way to look at it, yes.
Cheese buns.
Yes. Have to dodge and weave.
Our highway guys would never do that, so.
No.
No.
Just the raccoons.
Especially if they're, if they, if they look classy, they're going to want to put them back neatly up as they go.
We could also, we could also make them deceptively small, so that would reduce people's garbage production.
Well, the plan, I mean, what we looked at were definitely thinner, smaller trash bins. I would say probably half the size of what the Welsh ones are. That's what we looked at.
Good plan.
And people could get two of them if they needed it.
No.
But then...
No, that's not allowed.
Well, they'd have to pay for it, they'd have to pay for two permits.
I think the idea also was to have, to have one for recycling, to encourage that.
Yeah.
So we can make the bigger one recycling. Does that work, Charlie?
Yes.
Okay.
Priorities.
That would work well for the library, we always have way too much recycling. I mean, not so much.
More, yeah. Any other comments? Brent, you want to add anything?
I thought I already did, but...
Yeah. I mean, I'm also very easy to find, so if something occurs to you later, and then at a hard travel day at the village, we'll have more opportunities for people to be participating in the survey.
Survey.
Yep.
So you have paper copies available then?
Yes.
Excellent.
And a QR code for people who would rather do it online.
Great.
Add it to my hard scramble list, ready?
This is a perfect opportunity to introduce and welcome Jillian, who is our newest high school intern, who is helping us allow for people to zoom in. Eventually, we'll get, we'll have to figure out how we get people to zoom in, but I want to welcome you and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And giving you an opportunity to say, is there anything you'd like to see at the village center?
Yes.
No? All right, well, you think about it. Not like an ice cream store or something?
Ice cream store would be good.
If you have it.
I'm, I'm tableing at the Universal, at the, what's it called, the lunch that everyone has together, Universal Lunch on the 21st. I can ask high school students.
There you go.
Great.
Excellent. Great, so I think, is that, and that's, that's what you were looking for this evening, correct? Wonderful, thank you very much. Thanks for all of your efforts, and thank you, Mel Corca. As referenced, these two are taking a class with Pattern for Progress that is about downtown revitalization and enhancements and the like. So when the grant is written, we will send it, send it round.
Sweet.
We will probably have to do a special something, because...
Yeah, we'll have to do that.
The grant is due before our next meeting, so we'll, we'll have to figure something out, but...
I got sick for the weekend, so that threw me out.
Well, you're not, that's just not, not in the schedule, it's just not allowed. Well, again, thank you very much. And I noticed that Rob Frye is in the, in the house, president of the Red Hook Fire Department Company, correct?
Chairman of the Board.
Chairman of the Board, sorry, I didn't have my notes.
No, that's fine, I'm expecting this. I just have our reports.
Wonderful, is that, and that's for July, correct?
June and July.
June and July, great. Do you want to, are they readable? Can you tell us what they, what they say?
I don't know, but I didn't...
You didn't look at them?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get them, it's all...
No, I appreciate that.
And we did approve the resolution to approve the fire protection agreement with the Red Hook Fire Company. So that was first on the agenda, so we had the public hearing, and then we approved the resolution.
We did, and it occurs to me that while you're here, if you want to sign it.
Sure.
On this 12th, today of September.
Adam Bosch.
Take your time, feel free to take a look at it. And so for June and July, I can report that there were a total of 48 incidents, and at the next meeting, I will, I will, looks like a lot of emergency medical calls. That is definitely the majority here. But I'll put that in my chart for the next time, thank you. Thank you very much, Rob. Awesome. And I'll get you, I'll get you a copy.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. No, does anybody have any questions for Rob?
No.
While he's here? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Onto the next item. I think we have spoken in this meeting about getting a tablet for our highway foreman so that we can populate it with a map, with an inventory of our water pipes, our hydrants, our curb, our water curb keys, curb caps. I forget what the, what-
Curb stops.
Curb stops. Sidney Pekvise calls them curb keys. And so they can also make notes while, while, while they are working. And the most logical service was Apple rather than, rather than a PC. And so you all have a quote for an Apple iPad Pro with a protective case, screen protector. The, our IT company that we use in, for everything else does not do Apple. So this includes two years of Apple Care. And then it includes the labor just to set it up and get it going. So the total quote is $2,113.98. And I am proposing that we split the cost, half water and half highway. And I just want to, we, the two options are, because this is a short-lived asset, it could come from the USDA reserve for the water side. And on the highway side, it could come from the highway reserve. But I wanted to run that, the alternative in the water would be the software, hardware upgrade. Or, and then on the, on the general fund side, it would be, I pulled up Streets Miscellaneous, which isn't my favorite place to put anything, but, but I wanted to run that by you all. And I would like a motion to accept or approve the purchase of this.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Do we have insurance on this? I know there's Apple Care, but if it gets dropped in water per se, like, is there insurance on this device?
I believe so. I believe that's covered under the Apple Care, but I will confirm.
Okay, great. Because I just, if it's going to be out and-
Absolutely. And that was the discussion that I had with our IT person. He said, yes, this should be covered for everything. So-
Okay.
-confirm insurance.
Because I definitely dropped my phone before and they do not cover everything.
I have spilled my keyboard.
Yes, it's just-
Yeah, I imagine-
Would want to, yes.
Hoping they cover it. If we're not expecting them to run it over, but-
Yeah, but if they're out there using it for job, with jobs and stuff.
Well, and that's also the, that, it is a substantive case that, in theory, that we are getting here.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
That we accept this estimate and purchase the tablet for the Highway Department.
And which funds would you, are you okay with the reserves?
I'm okay with the water reserve. I would probably recommend the miscellaneous streets.
Okay.
For the scrap metal. We're doing records amounts of, we're getting records amounts of revenue on scrap metal this year.
Scrap metal tools?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, second, second. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions?
I think this is long overdue for the Highway Department. We were working with our engineers in developing an asset inventory at Karen had spoken, but also with this tablet and the, and the programming and the diamond maps that we'll be subscribing to. We could put in signage. This also requires a rotation of the year, catch basin cleaning, and even tree, our tree inventory for our urban forestry agreements and contracts that we have. So there's a, a lot of uses for this, a lot of data that could be stored and very useful, I think, not only for the Highway Department, but also for our in-house staff and for the trustees to provide more adequate oversight on all the infrastructure.
The other part I'll add, having just gone through the retirement of someone who's got an awful lot of information stuck up here, it's a way to attempt to put it into a place that will stay with the village as much as possible. Brent mentioned Diamond Maps. That is actually the name of a software, a type of software that is specifically for mapping, mapping your inventory. And we are going to do a 30-day free trial, but I wanted to get the tablet first. We have GIS data. The engine, our engineer has it. And Diamond Map says, just send us the data. We'll upload it to your system. So I wanted to do that at the beginning of our 30-day trial, just to make sure that this is something that makes sense. If it is, the software itself for a year costs $420. So we are not talking about a crazy software package, which is great.
And another very useful tool that we'll have is when we get the sewer up and running, it will help us inventory and keep track of our pumping schedules, our cleaning of the screens and maintenance of the pumps. Because this will be 127 properties. It's a lot to take care of and keep under your head. So I think this will all be extremely useful for everybody.
Can we use it to also inventory things like park fixtures and stuff like that and light-
And benches, yeah, all that stuff.
And garbage cans, et cetera?
Mm-hmm. Awesome. All right. I believe we have a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Who's seconded? I'm sorry.
Mel Corca.
Okay.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Aye. I didn't say aye. Thank you. All right. Next item is water payment plan. You have a resolution in front of you that is for the adoption of a residential payment plan for past due water bills. We initiated at the last meeting penalties, I believe it was, oh, let me look it up. After 30 days, the payment penalty goes into effect and after 30 days, it goes up. And I'll find it in a minute. But this is an opportunity for if someone has past due bills, but they want to enter into a payment plan, this gives us a basis to do that. This form has been reviewed. It is a template as well that we've just adjusted.
Okay.
It allows for someone to pay a down payment and then to pay on a monthly basis to get caught up. And so I wanted to, I think that this is a great way to get folks caught back up with their water payments. So I'd like to read the resolution. It's a resolution to approve the adoption of a residential payment plan for past water due bills. Whereas the Village of Red Hook desires to, desires to offer residents who are past due with their water payments an opportunity to pay off their water bills based on their financial circumstances. Whereas the Village Board has reviewed the attached agreement and agrees that it is a fair document, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Red Hook adopts the use of the attached residential payment plan for village water customers who are past due with their water payments. May I have a motion to accept? So moved. Thank you, Mel Corca. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brent. Any discussion, questions?
I'm glad to see it. I don't want people to feel like they can't pay their water if they're having a hard time, especially in the economy. So I'm glad to see the policy.
Okay, all in favor. Well, let's go through Deputy Mayor Kavalcik.
Yes.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Kirval.
Aye.
Trustee Dwyer McNulty.
Aye.
And Mayor Smythe says yes. Great. Thank you. That's that resolution. Nope, that's up there. Okay. The next order of business is budget adjustments. And so you have a chart. It's possible that on the back page is the water, the water fund and the one side is general fund and the other side is water fund. You'll note that it does even out. Looking at the, the general fund, so for example, in the revenue side, the low SAP, other government is the town. They pay 75% of the budget. The budget is 12,000, so that proper number should be 9,000. The workers' compensation, the town portion is, is lower for two reasons. One, the workers, the cost of the workers' compensation came in a little bit lower. And we also get, we are part of a safety group and we get a dividend. And that, it's not in this line, but that we lower that because that is a portion of what is removed from what the town's portion is to pay. So this is a better reflection of what the town portion is. And then for the other revenue line item is bus patrol. I believe that we have reviewed this program. I believe we accepted it in the March timeframe. It is up and running. What, just as a reminder, it is, Bus Patrol is a company and they install cameras on the stop sign arm that comes out for school buses. So if someone passes a stopped school bus with the stop arm out, a picture of their license is taken and they get sent a, a ticket. And if that happens in the jurisdiction of the village, we get a portion of the fine. The reason why we get a portion of the fine is that it is in the court jurisdiction of the Village of Red Hook. So if there is, if anyone wants to contest their ticket, they come into our court. We have received a small bit of, of revenue and we didn't have a line for it. It was not in our budget. So this number is based on nothing. It's a number in there. I think that, Ray, how much have we received so far?
I don't know offhand. I'm sort of thinking it was like four or five hundred dollars.
Right. And school is barely, hasn't even started. So it's highly, I mean, who knows how much this will be. We hope that people are not passing stopped school buses so that we actually don't get a lot of revenue. But other areas have received a significant amount of revenue. So this at least puts us a line item in it. We will see how it goes. And then on the expense side, Brent, you've mentioned, you've noted a couple of times, the original budget was based on having an employee do the cleaning. And we changed that to a cleaning service. So it was originally in a different line item. And so this now, this adjustment will account for the cleaning service. The unallocated insurance, there was a crime, there's crime insurance for $515 that wasn't, wasn't included in the budget, so that needs to be added. The other general government support, that is, that line item is actually our intention of adding to the fund balance. And so this was an easy one to use for the moment to make the numbers match at the bottom. The police fuel is, it's running high, so it seemed like a good opportunity to put in a little more money there. The police software and the central data processing, that is literally a switch from one budget to the other. Because the police have their email addresses and all the software that goes with, with their, workers are, it's easy to separate. It's a separate invoice. And in my efforts to try and really isolate what each thing costs, I wanted to put it into the proper account. So that's literally what that is.
Can I ask a question about that?
You may.
Because I saw the invoices this month. Has there been talk with Larry about whether or not those can be incorporated into the CMI?
It's really a question of whether it goes from, it's currently done through GoDaddy versus the village ones are done through Google. So, and-
Substantial each email is.
Yes. I have, we haven't really nailed it to the ground yet.
Okay.
But at least we're isolating what the cost is. Now, the other is, some of those are three years. There was, I think, one that was one year and most of them were three years. So that's why it's so high. So we won't get that bill every year. Excuse me. Catch basins, I actually need to make an adjustment, but I'll probably make it next, next month. The actual overage for the catch basin cleanout work was 4,400 over the budget. And that's going to come out of street maintenance. I added the $130 from vault work, but Brent has corrected me and said that the catch basin line is for cleanout only. So I will move that 130 back probably to supplies. But for the moment, this, this isn't going to cause any trouble in the meantime. Russian weeds, we have actually used three days to grind. We have an enormous pile of what's effectively mulch by the old highway garage. And it costs 9,000 instead of 8,500. So this accounts for that. Abraham's Park, because we did so much work for the new benches, et cetera, I just wanted to put a little bit more money in there to cover the costs that are coming in. The state retirement system, we have the actual estimate for what it's going to be this year. And it's lower for the, for everyone but the police. Police, it went up just a tad. And then the workers' comp. Fire department is lower than, than originally budgeted. Celebrations, so in celebrations, we pay for ASCAP and CSAC. Don't ask me what those acronyms are for, but they are related to music licenses, which allows us to do hardscrabble. It allows us to someday put music on our hold button. And there was some confusion as to whether or not we needed to pay for that for 2020. And in final discussions with these companies, we are required to pay all the way along. So it's a little higher this year than it has, than it was last year. And then the next line item, the 6989.4, other economic and development contract expense. That was the best line item that our controller, Michelle and I, could come up with for the community needs assessment. So that is a new account. And that, the $1,000 from the adult recreation, Red Hook Senior line that we had identified as being available is coming out of that line. And then the last is the disability, which includes the cancer care for the fire department. In the past, we have just put that into the workers' comp line. It really isn't workers' comp. It is disability. And so we've created the proper line for that. And that's putting that in the right spot. And that comes out evenly. And then on the water side, interests and penalties, we are currently at 21, over $2,100. And our budget is 2,000. So it seemed to make sense to adjust, A, we needed to adjust it up, and so I rounded to 500. And then on the expense side, I'm not sure why we only had $500 in the water tapping. We may not have been properly allocating the cost of installing a new water tap in the right line. And if you look at the current P and L, there's no income on the water tap line and there should be. I believe we have received, I believe we've received one check in this fiscal year. But the costs are higher than $500. And then tools, the Highway Department purchased, on my approval, a, a laser, laser level that they had been borrowing and were no longer able to borrow. And then water repairs, just went down a tad to make the numbers match, frankly. So that's it. I have a resolution for the budget adjustments, a resolution for budget adjustments to village water fund, general fund and water fund, whereas the Village Board desires to amend the general fund and water fund budget to reflect current information and expenses. Whereas the Village Board has reviewed the attached schedule of budget adjustments, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Red Hook amends the general fund and water fund budgets as noted in the attached schedule of budget adjustments. fund budgets as noted in the attached schedule of budget adjustments. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brent. Second?
I'll second.
Charlie, thank you. Any questions, discussion? Okay. So let's see, let's have a vote. Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee Lang?
Aye.
Trustee Kirval?
Aye.
Trustee Dwyer McNulty?
Aye.
Mayor Smythe, yes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I have a new item which you have in front of you. Brent and I met with the USDA Rural Development Department this morning and the USDA is one of our funders for the sewer project. And their form for tracking payment applications is called a Form E. And they had a modified budget, they had an original budget and we met with them to discuss where we are now and several of the line items needed to be readjusted. And so we discussed all that this morning. We are all in agreement and we were told all we need to do is to make those adjustments in the modified budget line and then pass a resolution by the board to make those adjustments. And then we are, we are good with the USDA until we need to make more changes.
But it didn't affect the overall cost of the project. It was just basically which category certain things fell into that corresponded with and paralleled the EFC's payment forms. So it was just a coordinated effort to kind of reshuffle the, the numbers in their appropriate category, but we did not change the cost of the project.
Correct. And actually, one of the, one of the change orders, USDA had a dollar more and these things at the end, they have to match to the penny. So now is the time to make those adjustments. So you each have the modified, a copy of the modified budget that was in the packet that I left at your place. To give you a sense, the original budget, and actually the original budget had a contingency of $3.3 million because the original project was going to cost 4.9 million and it went up dramatically. And so the administrative piece is 184,730. That's the modified budget. Technical services, which is the, which is engineering services, there have been several change orders there and that is now 965,393. And then the construction piece is what we bid, what we awarded the contracts for, which is a total of 7,239,092 cents. That leaves us with a contingency of 57,903. I will add that there is contingency within both of the construction contracts, so that is not the full contingency budget. But that is, that is where we are in the mix. So I will read the resolution that I have here. So this is a resolution for budget adjustments to the sewer project USDA RD Form E, whereas the village board desires to amend the sewer projects USDA RD Form E to reflect the current project costs and to be the same as the EFC project documents, whereas the village board has reviewed the attached, the attached adjustments. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Red Hook amends the sewer projects USDA RD Form E as per the attached Form E modified budget dated 9/12/2022. May I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Thank you, Brent. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Declan. Any questions?
A lot of paperwork.
A lot of paperwork, a lot of money. All right, let's vote. Deputy Mayor Kovalchuk?
Yes.
Trustee Lang?
Aye.
Trustee Kirval?
Aye.
Trustee Dwyer McNulty?
Aye.
Mayor Smythe, aye. Okay, thank you very much. Good stuff done.
Many more happy Form Es.
Many more happy Form Es, yes. You will now see a whole series of those that comes next. I also just wanted to take a moment to thank our deputy mayor, deputy clerk, Anna Marie, for filling in for our village clerk who is in training as we speak at the New York Conference of Mayors Seminar. So thank you, Anna Marie, for helping us out here tonight. All right. The next item on the agenda is treasurer's report.
The treasurer's report, as of the end of August, the balances of our accounts are as follows. The general fund, 1,596,379.1. Water fund, 193,188.62. Payroll clearing account, a new name now, it's no longer Trust and Agency, 28,218.70. The sewer fund, 22,852.48. Hardscrabble, 20,160.39. Village Green, 6,958.92. Health insurance, 7,099.66. And petty cash, 52.58. The reserve checking balances are as follows. Fire department, 5,034.28. Police, 14,587.90. USDA, 134,058.50. Highway, 30,587.87. Snow reserve, 3,279.92. Tower reserve, 17,713.73. Unemployment, 4,544.73. Court reserve, 3,299.2. And the office reserve, 972.65. The total monthly expenses for the month of August were as follows. General fund, 117,472.34. Water fund, 85,843.16. This amount is higher than average because of a couple of things. There was the principal and interest associated with the USDA Phase II water project and there was a transfer from the water fund to the sewer fund of $25,000.
As, as per the budget?
As per the budget, yes. The payroll clearing account, 3,450.2. And sewer, 1,170,840.7. And this was the dispersment of the EFC seventh distribution for, for the, for the project. And that concludes the treasurer's report.
Can I ask one question?
You may.
Does the hardscrabble fund include the 1,500 transferred from the celebrations line? Yet?
No.
Great.
I think we need a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Thank you, Declan. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much, Ray. All right, next are my reports. Starting with the police report, in the summary that you have, we've actually added a line to help look at our numbers on a more even basis. We ask the police department to do water tower security checks and those, those are listed as an incident, which isn't really what it is. And so we've separated it out on your, on your form there. So the incidents total 260 and that excludes the water tower security checks. So in the Village of Red Hook, there's 100, there were 129, this is for the month of August. In the Town of Red Hook, there were 126 and in the Village of Tivoli, there were five. And the water tower security checks, and these are all in the Village of Red Hook and there were 94. So this is a better reflection, particularly in comparison to the activity that's happening in the town as well. And then the uniform traffic tickets, there were 40, 21 in the Village of Red Hook and that includes six parking tickets and 13 in the Town of Red Hook. And there were eight arrests, two in the Village of Red Hook and six in the Town of Fire department, we already discussed and I have no further reports. So we are on to Deputy Mayor Kovalchuk.
Thank you. I'll start with the Village Green Committee monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification, 4,000. Shade tree contractual, 12,000 in Village Green checking account. As Ray had mentioned in his report, 6,958.92. A lot of that money came from donations from several families for benches and donations as well. And we always encourage that and accept donations for our projects. The Village Green Committee-
Is there any grant funding in that or not yet?
Not yet. Well, actually, no, there was a grant funding for $1,500 that came from the Dutchess Land Conservancy. So I don't, and that money will be used for the fall planting, 2022 fall planting. The Village Green Committee met on August 26th at Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park. We reviewed potential tree planting sites for the 2022 annual fall planting day and sites included the Red Hook Village Municipal Parking Lot. There were two trees, one was sadly removed and tried to be planted and currently died. That'll be hopefully refinanced by the project. So two, two new cherry trees in the parking lot, new trees at Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park. And those would be memorial trees already paid by people. Prince Street at Church Street intersection, Park Avenue at Old Post Road intersection. And we'd also discussed a plan for the Arbor Day Foundation New York State DEC Tree Grant, which I'm happy to say that we did receive a $1,000 grant. We were notified on August 2nd from the New York State Urban Forestry Council and this reward will be used to plant a grove of ornamental trees near the new seeding area on the west side of Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park. Upon completion of the tree planting event, the Village Green Committee is required to submit receipts of all expenses, a brief report detailing the event, and copies of press releases, news articles, events and programs, and photos from the event. We did have an event at the new seeding area on Sunday, which is documented and for the Abraham's family. And it was Frank Abraham's 90th birthday and he had a bench dedicated on his behalf.
And Frank, Frank Abraham's is Richard Abraham's uncle.
Uncle. And Richard Abraham's three surviving sisters that all now live on the West Coast came, one was the first time since she graduated from high school, I believe. And they grew up in the village and we met Richard's twin sister and they're lovely people. And they were quite pleased to see what we were doing with the park and how we were maintaining it and our future plans. So it was a very good day and this was a start of new things happening at Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park.
And we now have an opportunity, now that we've been able to speak to people who knew Richard M. Abraham's, to actually do a little bit of, to put some information on the website so that we keep that information in the, in with the village. His family called him Richie and he died just before he turned 25 and it was really, it was great fun to hear about him and what he was like. And so we're going to capture that in, on the website.
And Village Highway Department removed abandoned bench mounting slabs and non-functioning light poles at the park and areas were filled with topsoil and reseeded. So if you swing by the park, it looks a lot cleaner and a lot less obstructive. So I mentioned a new bench, memorial tree that was purchased, I'm sorry, it's another new bench and a memorial tree has been purchased by a private individual. The bench and tree will be installed in Abraham's Park during the fall planting. And of course, as always, residents and businesses interested in having a tree planted on their adjacent right of way or state right of way, volunteering for planting day, or making a donation to support the Village Greens, various community beautification projects can contact David Pearson, myself, or the village clerk.
Brent, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The meeting that you had on August 26th, is that a regularly held meeting? Does it happen every fourth Friday?
No, it's not. We just kind of, when we feel the urge, we do it. So we'll be meeting soon, I hope David Pearson sets the meeting times. So we're trying to locate the trees for sure for the November planting day.
Is there any way that you could set the meetings so you could report on them so that people could attend the meetings if they wanted to?
I am trying to get that established through our chair, so.
Very nice. Awesome.
So hopefully, yes.
Because we could get more planting volunteers that way, I think.
Understood.
Great.
It'd be better coordinated all around. So I agree with you 100% on that. The Village of Red Hook Highway Department monthly report for the month of August, the highway department is currently picking up brush during the first week of the month. So this has changed. We used to pick up on the first and third Monday. Now it's the first week of the month. So we've kind of found out that it takes more than one day and more than two days a month. So we'll just concentrate our efforts during one week during the month and try to get more work done as possible.
Also acknowledging that that did not happen last week and it will happen this week.
Yeah, a lot of brush piles out there. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris, leaves and brush in separate piles and please, please limit your brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet with tree branches no larger than six inches in diameter. Brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, garbage or construction material will not be picked up. Residents with smaller amounts of brush are encouraged to share a brush pile with their neighbor and please limit your brush pile to one pile per household per month. The highway department will be repaving the following streets in the village. Park Avenue from Old Post Road to Linden Avenue, including three parallel parking spaces in front of Richard M. Abraham's Memorial Park. Elizabeth Street from East Market Street to Firehouse Lane and Tobacco Lane from Elizabeth Street to actually where the parking lots are for the Metway Building, the Tobacco Building and the Baywright Buildings behind. That's now then private property as it enters the alleyway between Flatiron and the Tobacco Building. Estimates were received from Callahan Industries on July 25th. 1,020 tons will be used at a unit price of 124, $124.39 per ton. The estimate total for the repaving projects of the locations I previously mentioned is And costs will be deducted from the fiscal year 2022, '23 general funds CHIPS budget line. And work is expected to be complete by the end of September 2022. I believe next week they'll be starting Park Avenue.
I think they're starting paving somewhere possibly tomorrow, not Wednesday or Thursday of this week.
So they'll be milling, doing milling of cutting down two inches of, and then replacing with two inches of blocktop. Stormwater management projects on Prince Street and Smith Street involving new catch basins, dry wells and diverter beams are anticipated to be complete by the end of September. Most of the work on Prince Street has been done and with the rain we had last week proved to be successful, which is always good. An estimate was received on August 25th from Frank Vosberg and Sons in the amount of $16,500 to install two 1,200 gallon dry wells on Schism Circle. And costs will be deducted from this year's general fund CHIPS budget line and work is expected to be complete by the end of September of this year. Revenue from the sale of scrap metal was received on July 26th in the amount of $552. Total revenue generated from the sale of scrap metal in fiscal year 2022, '23 is Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $45,042.66 has been generated. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway, water and materials management departments. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal, they contact- they contact the Village Highway Department at 845-758-8600. Just leave a message. Or the village clerk's office, and the Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Intermunicipal Task Force and Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report. Sewer project meetings were held. These are progress meetings. August 12th, that was progress meeting number 18. And on August 26th, progress meeting number 19 in the Red Hook Village Building and via telephone. Representatives from CT Mail, Sastos Contracting, Carver Construction, and the Village of Red Hook attended. There's a lot to go over, and this will be published on the website. I'll spare you all for that. Just briefly, we've started installing tanks. As of the 26th, we had 10 tanks installed on South Broadway on the east side. I believe they're now on the west side of South Broadway installing tanks. And one of our trustees, "That was a good experience," or "Okay."
No, it was great. They were wonderful.
Great. So we like to hear great experiences, so. And the library had theirs installed, not yet?
Yet.
Okay.
They need a specific size, yeah.
For driving, to drive over it. And you're big, okay. So we look forward to having a progress report when those are installed. So as Karen mentioned, USDA came to visit today, and they did take a tour of the treatment plant. And that was it? You went to some of the sites?
And we went to the storage area. They were looking to confirm one of the requirements of the contract is that most of the steel needs to be US-made. And so they were looking for evidence of that, which they found.
United States iron and steel. So 100% of the mains are installed, and we're up and running. I think we're looking to start up the plant, do a wet run, which is without dirty water, without sewage, just to see if we have leaks. This will be done in the last week of September. So if all goes well, we'll see how it works, and then we'll start playing with the dirty water. So a lot of fun ahead. The Village of Red Hook Water Distribution System Maintenance and Improvement Project, and also the Sewer Service Area Operating and Maintenance Procedures and Protocols. Meetings were held on August 12th and 26th in the Red Hook Village Building with representatives from Delaware Engineering, our Village Highway Department, and Karen and I attended. We reviewed the status of completing the remaining requirements to secure funding from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for 40% of the $1.8 million Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant. And we're also looking at the intermunicipal agreement between the Red Hook Town and Red Hook Village for upgrades and repairs to the water distribution system interconnect. We have minority and women-owned business enterprise work plans to do. I think those are complete. So the grant will be used to improve the SCADA system, which is the control system. The wells talk to the pumps. At Firehouse Lane, well field and the water treatment plant. And when repairs to the Red Hook Town and Red Hook Village interconnect, we replace mains, valves, and connections of the northeast quadrant water distribution system. A tablet was ordered, actually, we just approved tonight, to inventory all of our stuff or help us inventory that. We discussed new federal laws regarding documenting and replacing lead components of the water distribution system throughout the village. Federal grants, grant assistance are being researched. We did a survey of existing water distribution system components, valves, hydrants, and mains. That'll start up soon, hopefully in September, to complete the remaining portions of the southeast quadrant and beginning on the northeast quadrant, including customers east of the village. And that'll again be beginning in September. There's a lot going on there, too, so I'll just leave that up for people unless someone wants any explanation of what I had mentioned. Karen and I also met on August 12th with Ron Hicks, which is Dutchess County Assistant County Executive for Planning and Economic Development, to discuss funding options for the Red Hook Village Sewer Phase Two and available sites, possible development opportunities for hospitality uses in a Red Hook Village general business and gateway business districts. On the intermunicipal task force side, both Charlie and I are members representing the Village of Red Hook. There were no meetings held during the month of August. Some of the other committees I sit on, representing the village and the town, the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, no meetings. The Community Preservation Fund, no meetings this month. However, the current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of August 31st There were no meetings of the Salkiel Watershed Community or the Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan Working Group. The Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, both Karen and I are the members of that. Meeting was held on August 19th in the Red Hook Village Building. Amy Smith discussed the zoning review committee to the grant opportunity and grant application for New York Forward Grant, which she elaborated on this evening. Thank you very much for that. Amy discussed meetings held with patterns for progress represented as regarding traffic calming, pedestrian safety, community identity signage, and proposals for a new general business sub-district, sub-zoning district. That's pretty accurate, right?
That is.
Good. Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee, there were no meetings held during the month of August. And the Village of Red Hook Public Spaces Initiative, both Decler and I are co-leasans. There were no official meetings held of the PSI during the month of August. I hear there will be one in September.
Okay.
In person.
Oh.
Plan to attend. And that is it for me.
Thank you very much. Trustee Lang, you're up.
Right, we are. I have a couple of reports this evening. First off, let's talk about materials management. So for the month of August, there was 1.2 tons of commingled, 0.35 tons of cardboard, 0.67 tons of paper recycling, for a total recycling of 2.29 tons. And 6.95 tons of garbage was picked up. And we sold a total of $3,351 in tags. And the cost for that garbage and recycling pickup, the garbage with the fuel surge charge cost us $813.67 for disposal. And I think third month, fourth month in a row of no contaminated recycling. Yay.
That's terrific.
That is terrific. Yes, the message has gotten out. I got the message. Also, I have the monthly report for the Village of Red Hook Water Treatment Facilities. So during the month of August, the water treatment facility treated 7,968,300 total gallons, which is an average of 257,000 gallons per day. That seems to be going in the right direction as far as monthly and daily totals. There were.
I just want to acknowledge, because it would appear that people didn't go crazy watering their lawns and filling their pools in the period that really was drought-like. So just an acknowledgement to the folks in the Village of Red Hook Water System to thank you for that.
Yes.
We seem to, I'm sure we've filled the coffers since, but.
Conditions, right.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we've turned a corner as far as, you know, conditions and drought. So there were also three bacteriological samples were collected and transported to PACE Analytical Services for testing. And they all came back absent of contamination, which is what we like to see. And then in the month of August, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. So that comes to an average daily use of 2.41 gallons per day. I did notice in the daily report, there was one. So as I said, the average daily volume is about 257,000 gallons. But for some reason, on the 23rd of August, there was under 100,000 gallons, which is a clear outlier. I don't know whether that was just a recording glitch or what happened there. Maybe we could ask Fernando.
Yep.
If something happened on the 23rd.
Yeah, I don't see any, like, the next day if they didn't, if they read it too early or something.
That was the first day of the Dutchess County Fair, so everyone, everyone went to the fair.
Okay. They weren't using their water at all.
Exactly.
Right.
Detective work there, Karen.
And otherwise, you know, we have some work on pieces of the water system is scheduled for this week. I think on one of the vents and one of the pressure gauges. And ongoing evaluations of other issues associated with the water supply. But that's it for me.
And Charlie, just update you on the sewer. There's some projects listed there, some of the issues with the sand filter. Hopefully, when we pass the clean water test at the plant, we'll be diverting some of the raw sewage stuff from the existing plant at Red Hook Commons over to the new plant to test it out and to grow the bugs. At that time, we'll be checking out the sand filter and assessing the situation there.
Okay.
So that's, that's in the works.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Charlie.
Okay.
Trustee Carville.
Okay. Red Hook Together's monthly meeting was held on Thursday, September 1st at 12 noon. No agenda was set for discussion. However, we did review the turnout of Red Hook Together's mixer and our takeaways from the event. If you have any interest in attending a future Red Hook Together meeting, please reach out to the Bard Center for civic engagement. The Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee. The committee meets every Wednesday over Zoom at 8:30 a.m. Over the summer, they went on hiatus and resumed meeting on September 7th. The mayor updated committee members on the village sewer progress, the New York Forward Grant, Hardscrabble, Neighbor's Night, and the upcoming Halloween Parade. Also discussed were the progress that the EDC intern made over a four-week period, updating business listings. There was no further news on the community development block grant or the redhookhudsonvalley.org website from the town. For further information, detailed minutes of the EDC meetings are available on the Town of Red Hook's website. The Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 p.m. in the Village Hall Conference Room. This month's meeting was postponed due to Hardscrabble preparations. In light of that, are you following the Village of Red Hook Events Committee on Instagram or Facebook? Both feeds are great places to stay up to date on village events. We also encourage anyone interested in receiving regular village and community updates to subscribe to the mayor's newsletter by visiting redhookvillage.org/newsletter. The Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble and Events Committee. The Events Committee is working overtime to make Hardscrabble Day 2022 a fun and welcoming community experience. If anyone is interested in volunteering on the day of the event, it's not too late to sign up. The Events Committee is also supporting the mayor's barbecue, an opportunity for Red Hook community members to get to know each other, enjoy some free delicious snacks courtesy of the village and cooked by Red Hook Response. The Red Hook Chamber of Commerce members will be stepping up with networking games and Red Hook trivia, too. And that's this Friday in the municipal lot.
At 5:30.
At 5:30. And it should be a fun time. The weather's supposed to be beautiful. There'll be free, non-alcoholic drinks. There'll be a nice crowd, hopefully. The Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee meets the first Thursday of every month at 7 p.m. over Zoom. If you wish to attend, please contact me at mkjarvil@redhooknyvillage.org. This last month, we prepared for the committee's booth at Hardscrabble. We also discussed a village volunteer day for the Red Hook Afrenda Project. If you would like to join other village volunteers to construct and decorate paper mache skulls, please consider coming to the community center on Saturday, October 8th, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. Children are welcome, so you can bring the whole family. We also discussed the specifics of a portrait project and how we will introduce the project at Hardscrabble. We reviewed and approved the copy and design of a brochure explaining what we would do, what we do as a committee, and have begun to research how to approach drafting an indigenous history of our region in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day 2023. Red Hook Public Library Report. The fall programs start next week, the week of 9/11, which is this week. All abilities teams will be selling crafts they made at Hardscrabble. Check out their booth. And the roofers have agreed to finish the roof punch list by the end of the month. The library is seeking approval from the county to use excess grant funds to finish the main floor, HVAC. And as you can tell, I submitted my report last week, which is why it refers to this week.
That is totally understandable. It's all mushing together at the moment with Hardscrabble the end of the week. So I'll just remind everyone, this Friday, the Neighbor's Night with the mayor's barbecue. Lucky for all of you, I am not the one cooking. But it will be in the village parking lot from 5:30 to 7:00. Everyone is welcome. Please bring yourselves, bring your friends, bring your neighbors. It should be a lot of fun. And then Hardscrabble Day itself starts at 10 a.m. on Saturday with a kids program for the morning and then teen scrabble, so teen bands, all or most from the community band, all from music space, that's it. And then the main stage starts at 4:45 with a whole lineup of great, fun bands, great music. And the cider tent with local cider and local beer will be open as of 4:45 on Saturday. So come on down.
And all day, we'll have food trucks there with picnic tables and lots of other places in the village where you can get food, too, so.
Should be a lot of fun. Thank you. And thank you to the Hardscrabble team that makes this happen. A large portion of that team is in this room, Mel Cork and Amy, and then Jeff Walsh, who is our music guru. And actually, I believe, I believe we're going to be interviewed on WKZE on Thursday.
So fun.
So that's, for those of you who listen to WKZE, you can listen for that. For those of you who don't, now's a good time to tune in to WKZE. All right, and now we are on to trustee Dwyer McNulty.
Yes, okay. So zoning and planning for August. There were nine building permits issued, three certificates of occupancy, seven certificates of compliance, and six municipal searches. There was also one fire inspection and five complaints. Fire hydrant issue, a parking issue, three property maintenance issues, and all complaints were remedied. For the planning board, they met August 11th. They tabled a site plan application for St. John Street, through St. John Street. And they approved the site plan for 31 to 35 West Market Street. The Zoning Board of Appeals met August 25th, and they approved the minutes from June 23rd. In terms of revenue, a total of $1,534 came in to the Red Hook Building Department through building permits, certificate of occupancy searches, and site plan applications. That's all. Thanks.
Super. Thank you. All right. The next section is general business. Does anybody have any general business they would like to add at this moment?
I do have a couple of comments. This is a response to last meetings. There was some concerns brought forward about one tree at Grift's, former Grift's Deli. I did check with our police department as far as records of accidents at the site or close by the site. And I did get a response with some records with no indications, accident, property damage at that intersection. But specifically to the driveway, I just read what was submitted to me from Sergeant Patrick Hildebrand. "I'm aware of what tree you are talking about. It's a big tree, and it does force you to slowly exit the parking lot of the old drifts. But it looks like a healthy tree. But we have not had any accidents because of it. So therefore, at this time, that tree will remain there." We also talked to our highway department. There was a concern about repaving the intersection of Amherst and Cambridge, I believe. of Amherst and Cambridge, I believe, there's still some construction vehicles coming in and out from Traditions. Any CHIPS money that we use is for a tenure project, so we're, we're going to wait until most of the construction is completed, Traditions, to go forward with that. It's pretty rough shape, but we're going to see how long we can hold out, hopefully next year we can get to that.
I, I will add on that, on the issue of the construction trucks driving through the residential area, I did reach out to the town, and the town highway superintendent reached out to Kirchhoff Construction, who is the, or Kirchhoff Development, I guess they are, and they responded by saying that they have a sign and that all deliveries are required to go in and turn, and there's a place to turn around. There've subsequently been some photos where there are trucks that really are just too big to turn in, and there's no place for them to turn around, so we're still working on it, I thought we had a solution, but we don't, not yet. So we're working on it. I don't know if you've noticed at least any, any slowdown, Steve? Same quantity? Yeah, as I say, I got a picture of, literally, they were unloading, parked this way, and there was no way they were going to turn around and go back out the other way, so after having gotten my email from back via the town superintendent, highway superintendent, that they weren't doing that, but they are, so still working on it. Okay, any other comments for general business? Hearing none. Public comment, opportunity for public, yes, please, come on up. Share your name for those who don't know you.
Steve Zarcheck, 92 Cambridge Drive, Red Hook. One, I had a neighbor approach me, and he knows I come to the meetings and everything, asked me to report that Traditions, or whatever they're called, when the village sent out the, water noticed that everyone should, you know, curtail watering of lawns and everything. He knows that Traditions was going full bore on watering their property, their grass and everything, and he asked the people, and they said, oh, we're using the village water, our pumps are broken. So they were full bore watering day in, day out, so, you know, as far as the trucks, they can turn them around someplace, they don't have to come up here.
Totally, totally agree.
Because Cambridge is starting to show the wear and tear.
Totally agree.
And also on the water, I've noticed the last week, when I was drawing water, glass of water, I was getting cloudy.
Yeah.
And I, so I also received complaints from Christ Church, people at Christ Church, they were, when pouring, pouring water, they were seeing cloudy, and...
And when was that?
Last week, week before.
Yeah, I've been doing cloudy, it's, it's air bubbles that are in there, it dissipates after 10, 15 seconds, but...
But, I'm just, just saying when I'm here in Red, you know, I had college...
I've had this, I might have for probably over six months now.
Okay, I just had college students complaining.
Yeah.
So.
Nothing wrong with the water, but...
Thank you, though. I, I will say, we were made aware of the sprinkler situation with Traditions, I don't have an answer for what, where we're at, but, thank you. Okay, we do have, we do have things for executive session, so we are going to, what's the word I'm looking for, we are going to go into executive session, and I expect that we actually will have business afterwards.
Okay.
So hopefully we won't be gone too long. Do you want to leave the Zoom on? No, I mean, since there's nobody there, I don't think there's any reason to do that, so you can shut down the Zoom and pack, pack up the stuff. So I do need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Brent, second?
Second.
Thank you, Declan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, we're going to go into executive session, and we will, we'll be back. So a minute before we ended executive session. And so we need to reopen, reopen the public session, motion to...
So moved.
Thank you, Brent, second?
Second.
Thank you, Declan, all in favor? Okay, we are reopening the public session to, what we discussed was the SRO contract, which is in discussion with the school district, and they, they are presenting the contract to the school board at their school board meeting on Wednesday, so I would like to propose a motion that the board authorizes me as mayor to sign the SRO contract with the school district, contingent on the school board passing, passing the, approving the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you, Brent, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie, any questions?
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
Is the school board privy to the police policies in the SRO contract?
They are, they would have access to the training that is referenced in the contract?
They would, okay.
Yes, if they, if they ask, it is not something that's attached to, but if, if requested, they would have access, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Is that a nay?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm an aye. Thank you. Any other business? Hearing none? Oh, yes, there's business, hold on.
Pay bills.
We need to, I need a motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved.
Thank you, Brent, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And actually, I just want to point out that the next workshop date is the 22nd, so we can approve the, the grant application at that time. For some reason, I had 25th in my head, but that was last month.
Did you want to meet sometime ago?
That's why I'm sitting here.
Okay.
To schedule a meeting before we all disappear.
Got it. Okay, and so Brent, do you have a final motion for us?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Declan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Good meeting.